So a follow-up question is, I noticed on level three, uh, different levels, level three specifically and on, um, we're talking about limiting visitors and limiting people to come to the event. Um, I don't really see, unless it's online ticket sales, how much, online ticket sales, how do you let the visiting team know that all of a sudden we go from five empty seats to two empty seats? Because you're gonna have a lot of upset visitors.
Yeah, so we're, yeah, so the question was, is how do you let the visiting fans know that we've started to limit ticket sales? We send out forms prior to games with all the important information that pertains to the game. Uh, and we normally send that out a few days in advance of the game. And what we do as, as administrators and athletic directors is we communicate that information to our fans and people. Things like ticket prices, halftime, is it gonna be homecoming, uh, the number of seats available will be just like that. Um, they'll, they'll be able to have plenty of time to communicate to their fans exactly how many tickets will be available for the game.
So that'll be like also posted on our website?
Yes.
Posted on there?
Yeah, and through, mainly through social media seems to be the most common, common way to.
So also with, with students being, uh, let's say you have a student that has a high temp and is being referred to the Fannie County Health Department for testing. Is there gonna be any kind of color code that we're gonna follow as far as our action plan in the classroom? As on that, so, uh, the opposing team coming will know that there's three students or three football players or volleyball players have been referred to our Fannie County Health Department to let them know what's at the competition to have a week out.
Yeah, no, we'll continue to have those conversations. Um, we already continue to have those conversations. We've had games already in the past that canceled because of flus. Uh, the flu happening, whooping cough, uh, years back, we had games canceled. So we're always in constant communication with athletic directors on what's going on with our kids. I mean, we have conversations about kids getting suspended, you know, all of that stuff always plays into our communication. And kids, you know, if we had five kids show up and, and all of those, you know, and five of those kids had temperatures, it goes back to kind of what Dr. Carlin said, at that point, we're really evaluating whether we're actually gonna play the game or not.
And the last question I have, I promise, is some of the, some of the places I've visited and worked in, they're actually pushing some of their sports into a spring?
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, like four or five of them together, football, volleyball, baseball, all in the spring. Is that in, in the conversation as far as KESHA or, or local district or districts at all?
So KESHA hasn't really, um, looked at moving in that direction. They did have a proposal early, uh, early last week, two weeks ago. Uh, they had a proposal that would delay the start of sports. Um, it went to the KESHA executive board and the KESHA executive board voted down not to delay the start of sports. Uh, the KESHA executive board, the people that I talked to on that, that voted against the delay in start, uh, said that, that they didn't believe the delay in start would help. They thought that the delay in start, in their opinion, um, would, would eliminate any chance of possibly rescheduling any games. So that's all the KESHA's really looked at. I know that Colorado put out a model where they have, I believe, um, four or six different seasons and they've condensed the seasons down. Um, you see California, California football and baseball, uh, as a way to try to save football. Um, I don't think anybody, there weren't a whole lot of people in Kansas that were in favor of that because you're basically choosing one sport over another sport, which I don't think is a good thing to do. The baseball kids' baseball season is just as important as the football kids' football season. So there wasn't a whole lot of that looked at by the state, uh, by, by KESHA when they started conversating about a lot of this.
Do you want me to share that KESHA does set the protocol and work so that is a state decision on a local decision?
Yeah, and KESHA does set the, the, the seasons and calendars and that's a KESHA decision, not a local decision. So the KESHA executive board does set the calendar in handbooks and that's where they set it, is inside the handbooks.
I did have a follow-up question and this might be more for Steve because I recall on the transportation plan that, um, it said that there would be a maximum of fifty students on a bus. So that, I'm assuming, but I wanna make sure that that goes for our sports as well, that we wouldn't put more than fifty kids on a bus for any event.
Yes, that, that goes for sports and we've spoke with our coaches, we've spoke with Charlie. Um, I'm not gonna dictate Charlie's procedures, uh, but one thing that we've done with our coaches is talk to them about cutting down their travel squads to essential personnel only on those travel squads as a way, because we know Charlie's busing and transportation isn't unlimited. Uh, there's already been a number, like every year, there's already been a number of dates that we have a, a large number of things going out district-wide, not just activities. So it's not uncommon for us to cut travel squads down in size.
Um, I heard a couple of questions as well. And you talk about bands and stick, and I'm sorry, I know this is getting in the weeds, but, um, you talk about sticking them at the south end zone, but you don't talk about what happens if they're in the gym? Because they still play for like basketball and things like that. So, um, is there a protocol for that or are they okay where they're at?
So, in the gym, um, we will have to, i- it's one of those things that we're gonna have to wait and see, to be quite honest with you. Um, they're currently coming out with, uh, recommendations and studies. The University of Colorado is doing, doing an aerosol study right now with bands. Um, so we're waiting for all that information to come out before we make decisions on what we're doing with bands inside. Um, as soon as that happens then, and we don't really have a band inside until, um, almost Christmas break. So we have a little bit of time to get better data on, on what we're gonna do with them. And the band used to be, we, we've kind of moved our band around from place to place to place. Um, and the south end zone, we just feel like it's gonna give us the most amount of space available to socially distance those band members.
The south, okay, that's.
Close this to the scoreboard.
Okay, that's getting way too much into the weeds so I'm not gonna ask that question. I'll ask it to Mr. Sova later.
Okay.
Um, and then on the seating, um, you said that everything's general admission, but then you're also talking about the season ticket holders. So is it, is it just that there's no reserved seating? You just first come, first served as to where you're sitting?
Yes, the problem with reserved seating and being able to socially distance is I only have one secretary and so in order to socially distance all of our season ticket holders, all seven or eight hundred of our season ticket holders, um, it would, it would take a lot of man hours to figure out exactly where we're putting people. Um, so that's why we didn't do that. We did general admission season tickets as opposed to general admission reserve season tickets.
Okay, I saw that before when I was talking to somebody, they were like, what, I don't get my season tickets?
No, yeah, they still get their season tickets, they just don't, don't get the seat that they've had for the last ten years necessarily. Unless they get paid early.
Yeah, then my next question on level five, um, and I don't know if you specifically said this out loud, I mean, it's in here. There's no fan attendance, including parents. So what happens when someone gets hurt?
We always have, I shouldn't say we always, multiple times a year, we have student athletes get injured out of things where parents aren't on, onsite. Um, we'll continue to do what we've always done. Uh, we have our athletic trainer available, we have our coaches available. We will contact our parent, the, the student athlete's parent, call them and communicate directly with the parent on what's going on with the student athlete. Most generally, if, um, a student's brain's mangled down, you know, down on the football field, most often times, well, we, we try to keep the parent up in the stands and we try to allow, we even have a team doctor on the sideline of football. So we try to allow our healthcare experts on the field to handle that and then communicate to the parent what's happened. We'll just continue to do the same thing, except the parent will be back here in the city at home as opposed to on the football field.
Alex, you have a question?
Yeah, I have one follow-up question and this might be getting into the weeds of it and I'm not trying to tell you how to do your job because I got a different job. I'm just trying to help you out. But, uh, nowhere on here talks about referees. So is that a different locker room, a different set of rules, a different temperature, a different water bottle, all that stuff involved?
Yeah, so they have their own protocols and procedures to go through. Uh, we've been doing a lot of the stuff that KESHA is mandating now. We've been doing that for a long time here at the City High School. Um, a lot of smaller schools will put, uh, the officials in, in a tiny locker room. You know, they don't provide them anything to drink, they don't do any of that stuff. What we will do is, is we have a large locker room where they can socially distance. We've always had that same locker room available to them. They have safety protocols that they follow, but we will have all of the cleaning equipment and safety equipment that they need available to them. But we've always had hand sanitizer, we've always had showers available, clean towels available, all of those things are available to them.
And that policy's already shared with you guys as far as the.
That's a KESHA policy, yeah.
Okay, that's KESHA's, yeah, that's a KESHA policy.
Mark, you have a question?
I'm good, thank you.
Last time I listened to Dr. Carlin on that. And Laura, I have more of a comment and it perhaps more towards Dr. Carlin can answer this or tell me it'll be okay. Um, I appreciate the plan, I think it's a good plan. I feel like activities are necessary for our kids to be in school. It's a necessity, not just a want. Um, but I have trouble being able to go with this plan. I feel it's very contradicting to the other side of where we're wanting kids to be in masks all day. So I just, I think, and I, I know there would be enough work if we took activities away. I just think we need to keep that in mind because it's, I think they contradict each other. And like I said, that's more towards Dr. Carlin than, I'm not trying to put down the plan, I think it's a good plan.
Sure, so I guess, um, we've tried to approach this philosophically the same way. Um, we want kids to be back in school as normally as possible while, while putting in place reasonable safety measures, um, to, to keep students and staff safe. So, um, I think that there's, um, there's an approach there where we're trying to make decisions based on data of what actually, what actually happens. Um, we're optimistic that we can have activities with those safety precautions and we're not gonna see virus levels, um, put others in danger. But if we see virus levels go up, whether that's through traditional classroom activities or whether that's through activities, then we have progressive steps to be able to, um, to keep safe. And there are places in activities where kids are gonna wear masks.
Yeah, and I understand that.
If they're competing, um, no different than if they're in a PE class and they're exerting themselves in a PE class, they won't be wearing a mask. We'll be doing what we can do to socially distance. Um, if they're out there, um, on the football field or they're running a cross-country race, they won't be wearing a mask. But if they're standing on the sideline, then they'll be wearing masks. And that's per KESHA, I think that's per KESHA recommendations as well, so, um, and I wish, Jennifer, I could say that there won't be any inconsistency in all of this that we do.
Oh, I know, I just felt the need to point it out that even though we may be socially distancing in a classroom or there's dividers, kids are still going to be required to wear masks in that situation and that's different than here. They're not necessarily socially distancing and they won't have to wear a mask. I just, I'm just pointing out that the, the two plans are.
Yeah, but there will be some inconsistency, but in our, in a regular classroom environment, if kids are engaged in an activity where wearing a mask is not safe, say they're physically exerting themselves, they will not be required to wear masks in those cases either.
And the, the teacher will determine that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Are you good? Any other questions?
No questions, just kind of.
Do you wanna comment now or do you want to do, see if there's a motion first?
Sure, let's see if there's a motion first.
Okay. Um, so they are asking for action upon this today. Um, so at this point, I would entertain a motion to, um, approve the athletics activities, um, section of what will be added to the, um, realty plan.
Okay, I'll have to make a motion.
This is getting high coming.
Janine moved, I'm gonna take, um, Alex's attempt at making the motion as a second. So discussion, do you want to go first or what?
No, come on, go first.
Okay.
I'm gonna walk out.
Sure, go for it.
I can't think of anything I've spent more time researching and thinking about in this COVID situation. Vote for my office and to try to perform my duties here as best I could. Thought a lot about, um, droplets, droplet distances, the size of antigens, the size of antibodies, masks, porosity of masks. Recently, I've been spending a lot of time reading about what seems to be a consistent, um, round of infection with kids that we previously didn't think were likely to become infected. And I think the statistics on those are a little bit sobering. But one of the things I ran across was actually a term that I once learned way back in an economics course. And the term is the tragedy of the commons. The tragedy of the commons is an idea that in order to achieve a common good, we must all agree to sacrifice. This shows the most in western Kansas in groundwater. If we all use groundwater without regard at the levels of groundwater, pretty soon it's gone. We know from times past that that's true with air pollution, environmental regulations, seat belts, remember the arguments about seat belts, I shouldn't have to wear a seat belt? And even in my lifetime, I was acutely aware of the arguments over smoking. Should I have the freedom to smoke? Should I be able to smoke inside? Should I be able to smoke on an airplane? It's my right. And now we look back at the argument about smoking and it almost seems laughable. But in situations where a commodity is scarce, the freedom to pursue our own self-interest is a direct route to squandering of that resource. It's endemic to our American notion that we are a country of freedoms. Our notion whereby everyone gets to pursue their own priorities. But individualism in this circumstance is dangerous to our collective self-interest. I submit that our resource here is public safety. It is a resource that should not be taken cavalierly. I've heard from a lot of you, that's the beauty of our system of government. But the argument that each of us should be allowed to choose for ourselves would more fully appeal to me if COVID infections were indeed a personal choice. We may not agree on many specifics, but I think we can agree that the virus cares not who it infects. For all those who wish to have their hard work to achieve excellence in their respective activities, I would ask, what is the best way to respect all who have already died? For those who minimize the risk that they are taking, that they are taking when they play a sport, I ask you, what is the risk being taken by businesses who are in peril of ever being able to survive? What risk is being taken by plant workers who live from paycheck to paycheck, unable to afford extended absences? Hispanic kids are nine times at risk for a COVID infection. An infection that can be brought home to their household. Nobody loves watching sports more than me. My kids are the beneficiary of the intangible lessons learned from competition. But I asked my fellow board members, what lessons are we teaching them in this critical time? Where are our priorities? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hannigan. Mark, Janine, do either one of you want to say anything on the topic?
Uh, yes, I might just comment, um, that I think it's, um, 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 there's a lot of unknowns and there's still a lot of theories. And, um, I think the plan that's been put together by the staff and, uh, particularly on the activities, it is the most conservative of the region, uh, but that's really not a test. The test is, is it prudent, um, is it onerous? Well, there's, there's a little of each of those. Uh, but I think we've got to take our best shot at allowing participation in the activities. In the case, it's the home front and, uh, a judicious approach, um, implementing what the, uh, Fannie County Health Department recommends we do in our conducting of educating the kids and allowing them activities experience. So, uh, I think this is a, a really prudent approach, uh, based on what we think we know and recognizing we don't know everything. So I'm, I'm in favor of the, uh, what was presented.
Janine, did you wanna say anything?
I've thought about this a lot and, um, you know, I, I know a lot of work's been put into this plan, um, but there are a lot of things to be said for not knowing really enough about what, um, what's gonna be assessed in the kids later down the line. Um, and I agree that we don't know everything, um, probably that we really need to know. Um, but we have to take our shot at it somewhere and we can't just sit back all the time. But, um, I know it's kind of conflicting. Um, I really have a hard time with this one just because of the fact that, um, one, my house situation right now and two, um, just looking at the kids' need to be able to be involved and as normal of an environment as possible. Um, but I, I do have some significant worries about what that's gonna look like down the road for, um, for our kids and for our coaches and teachers and, and whoever's involved in those activities. So I know that's not an answer, but it's kind of where I am.
Jennifer, did you wanna say anything on it?
Uh, no, I'm still kind of conflicting. I have, I, I like this plan and I think it's good. I just have trouble voting for it when I feel like it, we're such the extreme on the other side.
Dana?
I do have a question. So if we do not vote in favor of this plan, are we essentially saying we don't vote to have sports this year?
Can you repeat what Dana said? Dana asked if we don't vote for this plan, are we voting for no sports or activities? Did I summarize it?
Yeah.
So this is, this is our plan to be able to address activities in the COVID world. Um, KESHA's calendar starts practices on the seventeenth, uh, a week from today. So, um, yeah, I think if, if you, you would have to decide if you don't want us to do this. Do you not want us to have sports? Do you want us to, to not do anything and just have sports as usual? Do you want us to not have sports? Do you wanna tell us what areas you have specific concerns about? And ask our folks to go back to the drawing board and address those. But, yeah, absent some direction from the board, I mean, I mean, we would, we would need specific direction from you. Um, what, if you don't want this, what do you want?
My answer to that almost would be the, that we have, we have approved handbooks at this point. And if we didn't put something into place, those handbooks would control. Because we've approved all the handbooks. So I don't know, I mean, I mean, going along with what Dr. Carlin said, if we wanted to do something different, we'd have to have a specific vote on that today to suspend something. But otherwise, I think the handbooks would control.
I guess I don't understand the connection. What do you, I'm not sure what you're saying with that.
Well, this would supersede what are currently in the handbooks, but we've approved handbooks for the high school and the athletics. Previously, we did that at our reorganization meeting. So unless there's something else to replace that, those handbooks, that's what would be controlling after, I mean, I mean, that's technically what's controlling right now really is, are those handbooks.
So you were saying something different than what Dr. Carlin said? Because essentially, Dr. Carlin said if we vote against this, we're saying we don't want sports or we could come up with other options and.
Well, I think he said you would have to vote on whether or not you're not having sports. Is that what you said?
Unless you wanna do something different, you would have to give us more specific direction, if you wanna do something different.
Alex?
So, uh, I don't know, I don't know if I got it, rest of the, the question, but. So is, is KESHA mandates, is it a living document? And what's our, what's our timeline? You said from now to September something as far as the sports and the KESHA standards? Or is it all season long, twenty twenty-one school year?
Yeah, so when they pass a hand, when they pass their handbook, it is passed for the entire calendar year.
Okay.
And they, they actually started back in July with standard calendar year.
Okay, so are they also calling those standards a living document or is this what it's gonna be all year long or is there?
No, all of their doc, all of their documents are living documents. They have an executive board and a board of directors that at any time could be called together to make alterations to any handbooks or calendars.
Um, I just wanted to add a couple of thoughts to this. Dr. Hannigan, you had said at one point that you hope to move the needle a little with some of the comments that you have made.
You were listening?
I, I was. And I really appreciated what you had to say today because I think I've probably have said some of those same things when it comes to wearing masks. Um, but I believe that there's some other safety pro, protocols in place. Um, for example, I know the entire football team was just handing masks today, or gators, to be wearing during practice and during the game. And, um, I hope that all of our coaches put our kids first and what I have seen from this administration is that they're listening to the Fannie County Health Department and making a lot of their decisions. And I hope that that will continue. Um, so you made me pause, you moved the needle a little bit.
Um. Can I quick response?
Please.
The Fannie County Health Department is not in favor of this plan.
I, Dr. Burns also indicated that she was ready for us to open school next week. Um, and she's also, also made some other statements as well at that meeting, which to me also indicated that activities and athletics are something that we should move forward with. Um, travel, I know, is questionable, but I think that is also something that needs to be done. on a weekly basis and making those decisions and making those calls. And I hope that those people who are in the room at that time, um, making that decision, uh, are listening to the best interest of our kids. And I think they would be. So, um, with that, unless there's anything else, um, Dana?
Do you have a question? Just because you mentioned that, um, Dr. Burns has said that we should carry on with activities and sports. Is that what you're saying?
I thought that she had said something to that effect. If I'm misquoting her, I apologize.
Well, because that was my question. Has the health department made any statements or recommendations specifically toward sports?
I'm sorry, the question, Mark and Janine, was whether or not the health department had made specific recommendations with regard to, um, did you say both sports and activities, Dana?
Yeah, sure.
Um, other than the comments that Dr. Burns made, uh, at the last meeting, which I think were more kind of of a, of a general nature, not a specific policy recommendation for our district. Um, however, I have talked with, um, the director, uh, Mrs. Dries about our plan and the idea of the, of the weekly meetings and she has agreed to participate in that. So, um, I didn't specifically ask her, do you recommend no travel at all? But I guess I'm inferring by the fact that she kind of endorsed our approach with the weekly meetings, that she thinks it's good to make those decisions on a case-by-case basis. But again, I don't wanna speak for her because I didn't specifically ask that question.
Anything else?
The, I guess the only thing I'd like to say is that if, if we are following Casey, um, action plan mandated, as the, uh, coach was saying, and then we are, it's a living document, and then we are also living these activities on a week-by-week basis or a competition-by-competition basis. And we have enough forethought in front of this decision. We can always say no, we're not going. There's too much of a risk, no matter what the reward. There's too much of a risk. But if we do have that situation where we are traveling through a district that doesn't have any cases and we have more cases, then that district can tell us no. The reward is not worth the risk. If we do get into a situation where everything plays out, it looks great, we play that competition that week, no matter what it is, it's a success, but then we need to move on to the next week and make that same decision, those same questions. Uh, however unpopular it may be, we need to make that, that question. So, thank you.
Okay, Stephanie, would you like to call or all?
Laura?
Aye.
Dr. Hannigan?
Nay.
Dana? This is really tough. This is our decision to make. And honestly, I don't feel comfortable making my decision. Um, so with that, because I don't feel confident and I do appreciate the work that you put into the plan, I'm gonna vote no. Janine?
Could Dana review what she said, please, before I vote?
I just said it was a really hard decision and I don't feel confident, um, having to make that decision. So because of that, because I don't feel confident, I don't vote no.
This is a, a really tough vote for me. Um, but I don't know what a better plan would be. And as long as it's, they flew a document and it can be changed, then I will go ahead and vote both ayes to the plan.
Mark?
With those thoughts in mind.
Mark?
Um, aye. I vote aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Thank you. You two offered a good discussion on this too. I really appreciate it. Um, who's gonna be handling operational levels, classrooms and district department plans, health services?